Ladies and DC. I'd like to call the meeting to order on the Swan Planning Commission, Wednesday, April sixteenth point five. Font Town Office, first item of business, agenda review. We are. I'm gonna, soon, you said we just have a statement, are you sticking around? I'll move public comment to the top.
No, no, go ahead, I'll, I'll stay.
Oh, okay.
I don't have it right yet anyway.
Okay, and Joel, I'm assuming you're here with multiple things, so I'll leave public comment alone.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here just kind of listen and see what's up, and I know we're getting through the.
Okay.
When it's coming to the select board and stuff, and maybe some questions regarding that.
Yeah. Okay, we'll leave that down at the bottom. Uh, agenda review. Uh, review and approve the meeting minutes. Entertaining a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for acceptance. For the meeting of April tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as written.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any discussion? Hearing none, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, no comparisons. Uh, we'll jump right into the course, so.
I'm just gonna go over some of the stuff that regional plan played out last week. First one, we in the purpose of the rural district. While we allow duplexes, we still have purpose in that purpose of a single family and residences. We just removed the term, single family, I'm just getting to that district. Rural, I'll make your first one. So I just removed, um. So just. Yeah, resident, family residences, I didn't, I just took out single. They wasn't required, but because the state's coming on again, it's that. Um. Ten dash nine, I'm just gonna go through our list. And ten dash. Nine, um, in the definition of lodging establishments. I put in the state required piece, um, some of this stuff, we didn't originally put it, I didn't recommend putting it, cause state lost, I was like, now it's, we're gonna put it in, but. I get her point to put it in, in like a definition, um. Lodging establishment.
All orders are invited now, he can call in if he has to, since we have.
We called, um, so I just, all I did here. Is we actually, uh, lodging establishment, you know, that's what we call it, our bylaw, I forgot what exactly we call it, but I switched the name to lodging establishment. Building, or buildings, staying guest rooms, didn't change any of that. I took out the, by transients on a short-term basis, less than one month on average, because of what we have to add, I don't. Can't really put that anymore. And I put, including the rental rooms of public funds for the purpose of providing Vermont general housing assistance.
And that's part of state law.
We don't have a choice, any hotel motel in the state of Vermont, the state can put homeless people in. Is what it is, towns can't stop it.
Well, we don't really count right now.
But if any future ones come in or another thing.
Some of them.
Yep.
So that, that's to meet that requirement, um, up on page four fifteen in the same vein. I hate this section, the page number, myself.
And why you're in.
I have a lot of times, like, open up two different documents, the same document to, like, reference over to, like.
You're changing there.
Yeah, four fifteen. Yeah, so right here, we have to put in definition of public facility. Gee shelters and hotels slash motels converted to permanently affordable housing developments. Which basically means if you got an old hotel or motel in town. And the state wants, Chamber of Housing Trust wants to convert it into.
That's in state law.
It is in twenty-four BSA, forty-four sixty-four B seven. Required by state law, it's right here, all this stuff. Nothing you can do about it.
Permit, permit it.
Or continue, yeah. Yeah, and, um, it doesn't have to be permitted, it can be in, um, we have a lot of those in conditional use.
Okay, so if a lodging establishment is conditional use.
They can't, you can't stop, uh, there's a few other things we're going to hear, where basically says you can't stop housing. Imperative conditional use, like, we're getting to that part.
Look, they wanted to turn the small motel into it.
Yeah.
Play it to them.
That's it.
What they should have done is not torn the rim down, it could have been stretched back into it.
And that stuff, yeah, um, what the state put that in because towns were trying to deny it, and they have its money, and they're. What the state does. Four dash thirty-one's our next couple changes, both changes are on there. Here, uh, so in our, this is so specific use standards. When character of areas where the DRB can look at things, we put in here, per twenty-four BSA forty-four fourteen, three and four dwelling unit buildings. Uh, shall not be denied based on the character of the area, that's in state law too. So you can't deny a building, three or four unit. Based on character of area.
As long as it meets water and second, am I correct?
Yeah, as long as it meets all your other.
Conversion.
You can't have anything that's subjective, you can say it doesn't meet setbacks, it doesn't meet lock cover, it doesn't meet. Those other things, cause that's the rules, you can't say it's out of character.
Lock there is gonna be.
Which is subjective.
Yeah.
And that's all the state.
Who's the character, who dictates the character?
Right, cause your character, my character, two different things, and then specifically here. You guys are, your DRB is allowed on a lot of developments to change, uh, well, we want you to make this a little bit bigger, and it's a little bit smaller, and we want a little bit more parking, based on, you know how they can kind of do that? You can't do that with housing. So the twenty-four BSA forty-four six shall not require a larger lot size, more parking spaces. Limit building size, including height and footprint, or limit the density below that allowed by the underlying bylaw for residential uses. Which means they can't, you can't come into a DRB and they go, if the neighbor complains, it comes in and they go, wow, you just. You know, make a little bit more of this, you know, I don't have to. Kind of like what I said on the city when the neighbor showed up my fence, like, would you make a single family home do that? Like, no, I go, no, I'm not doing it. Same concept. Um. On four dash thirty. I put in this piece, you have to have the hearing within a hundred and twenty days of a complete application.
For DRB?
For DRB. Lot of them do a fashion that, but. I think most ours is, we try to do, are you guys?
Never had a problem with that.
I know, but they wanna.
Yeah, hundred, hundred and twenty days is a long time.
Yeah. Lot of towns fought that one in the legislature last year. But, and I don't.
They're doing that so people don't drag out.
Yeah.
And try and get people, try and force developers not to do a project, keep dragging something.
So, yeah, they wanted us, we just had to know that we must hold a hearing within a hundred and twenty days. I don't think that's a big deal, um.
That's a, yeah.
Other reason?
Yeah.
Developer will put it off because they're asking for certain things, or some certain people will forget about it.
Oh.
And that has happened.
Yeah, but they can still do that, cause this one's deemed complete, so the developer doesn't quite make a deemed complete application, they can. And deemed complete still gives you room for, well, if you didn't do the drawing, right, it's not complete, you know, there's, there's wiggle room, but I don't think that was a big one. Down in section nine. This one is interesting, uh. Got it, uh. This was a change we made a while ago, we left the underlying changes in this version, just so you know. In fact, these are the boundary board, shall require condition of subdivision approval, that is certificate compliance we obtained. Make sure the required improvements have been installed, this was some issues we either had with some trolls here. And we go to the select board, that was that one where to get your COC, we already changed it from made to shall. You have to.
Shall require, I think. Yes, you're doing it. To be a plan, sure.
All the as-built plans, yeah, you have it.
Any further development, that's what we talked, yeah, so. So meaning, Joel, I'm just thinking out loud here, and me, Joel. Meaning, one or two houses gets built in a development, the cul-de-sac is installed before another.
CLC, yeah, yes.
Certificate, before the certificate of occupancy is given, certi- certificate of compliance. They, someone has checked to be sure that the road is up to standard. Cul-de-sac, which we had an issue with this winter on our last fall. Where someone, the other thing that went with that was occupying before. Do we put anything about that?
Um, record, so this is the next one. Uh, you give me a permit for four-unit building in, in the village, there's water and sewer, the neighbor appeals, doesn't count. Need to have twenty interested parties, this is gonna change this year too, in about six weeks.
The more or less.
Twenty people who can prove a harm. In the same harm, so you can't be, I did, blocks my sunlight. But it stinks, those don't count, you need twenty block for sunlight, twenty lowering my property value, or twenty of this, one's likely to change too. Not guaranteed yet, but basically the state is gonna make it, you can't.
You need twenty people to be, to feel a decision.
Yeah.
In a whole way, same thing.
Twenty interested parties, they have to, all twenty have to prove.
You can't have one neighbor complaining about.
So if one neighbor does not like.
Has an appeal.
I got a single family home, and I'm converting it to a four unit, I come and get my application, a person comes and complains, and they throw a fit, normally you could give them the room, and they could complain, now it can be like. Gotta give this, you can come and yell at the DRB, the one person can yell at the DRB, but.
Your public comment.
Obviously, the DRB can't basically stop it. And, um, it's why so much, we actually moved all this into permitted use instead of conditional use. Sometimes dragging their feet, making three unit, four units. You know, conditional use, but you have to give it, it's not really a conditional use, it's a permanent use, you have to give it. You, 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 you can't stop it, it's, it's permitted in state law, and.
With sewer and water.
With sewer and water, they were duplex without sewer and water.
What did you guys do to, um. Change of use, seasonal, the year round, or?
We love that conditional use.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. Yeah, but I believe, did we eliminate, there was something about square footage.
Yeah, we eliminated the square footage.
There's no, there's no square footage requirement with, within those conversions.
Okay.
Um, or in general, there's no square footage requirements even for, wasn't there something with seasonal or two or something?
Apartment. Right, but you can, you can, yes.
Minimums or?
Yeah, and, um. Apartment movements, which you can't do anymore either, I think.
Yeah, we eliminated all of them, I was thinking, um, a lot of tiny houses, the.
Well, I'll be.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're gonna see probably in a year or two, I think, I think this, some people are gonna make a push in the state, especially because of the hotel motel program. That boarding houses are allowed to come back. Because. Because if people can't afford, even now, an affordable apartment in this area is like, two thousand dollars a month for two-bedroom, that's the affordability standard. And so it's like, if you're a young person, when you just lived in a dorm room in college, not live in.
Um.
I think they're gonna do, I think the state's gonna do that next year.
That old house cross from me, Mike Lambert, well, he's doing a great job, but. Me and the neighbor next to him on passing drive, we're like, that was our idea to take that house and turn it into like a boarding house.
I have a question for you, Corey, when you talk about lock coverage on the shoreline. And you said that the state regulated that, and you couldn't increase it past twenty percent. But we got a shoreline permit back last month from the state at twenty-six percent. Approved from the state.
They must have worked there for the state laws, twenty percent.
No, the, I, I don't know, I shouldn't jump in right now, but I can.
This is where, that's probably, I'm assuming why you're here, is.
Well, that's part of it, and, and you've came over twenty percent.
I just know we got that one approved.
What you've gotta do is you've gotta come up with best practices.
Right.
Terrible piece of steak.
Like you put in a dry well.
Yeah.
I just, I just had one approved, I'm slightly over twenty percent, I'm gonna put in a six-foot diameter, four-foot dry well. It isn't gonna do a damn thing, but it's gonna make them happy. Cause we're, and I don't have a run-on problem to begin with, but again, that's.
It's not going to the lake, they think it's gonna end up in your dry well.
Yeah, they, they call it best practices, and I had to cut off some other, but I'm over, I'm slightly over twenty percent, but.
So.
That, what they, if you're under the twenty percent, then. And they let you, you know, pretty much do what you want, but if you're over, you've got to go through that.
Do something to remediate the issue.
Right.
Now, so you know, and Amy may not know, essentially what we've done, and we'll get there at some point.
With the shoreline.
With shoreline is, put everything in the state's hands, not.
You could, yeah, but that's what I'm here to talk about, because. You can, the state doesn't cover everything that you need. You've made it so that I can't build on the property I am.
There's a lot of places like, oh, there's a lot of places like that.
And there's, yeah, and they shouldn't, they, it shouldn't be like that.
Well, you want to make, I'd like to make a motion.
We haven't got that part, we just got this.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
I, well, I thought you wanted to let the party continue.
No, I don't want him finished, that's fine.
Okay. So we added in here, uh, and I'll, and three sections, just so that it's clear. But also, on those four units, you actually have to allow six units. If two of the units are affordable, you get a housing density bonus of forty percent round into the nearest full unit, and so we called all that out. That sounds extreme, it's not that extreme, you gotta remember, we live in a state that. We build three times the amount of houses in nineteen seven, in the nineteen seventies, and we have the last thirty years. In this state, we built fifty-seven hundred homes a year in the seventies, and we built twenty-one hundred homes a year in the last thirty years of the state. Forty percent density bonus, that's from the state.
That's what I was talking about, Milton does, same, same concept. That allows, by law, shall permit any affordable housing development. Density bonus.
And they get one, we talked about this, cause remember, we, we knew about this, cause we set that one more floor, and that's why we went lower a floor, so when they add that floor back in, our fire truck can still get to it. So when people go, why, I think we stayed at three floors.
We went to thirty-five or?
Thirty-six, thirty-five.
Three. Whatever we did, we knew, we knew about this, we just.
Fire department can go down and just roll four.
Yeah, Joel, so we, we undersized our max height, knowing that they could get the bonus for a second, another floor on top of it.
So we're not buying a new fire truck.
Please, uh, Chief Cross told us he could touch for the fire truck, essentially.
Yeah, so but, we didn't. Some of this stuff, we didn't call out, cause, cause the way it all works, you know, like, some people have been lock covered, but like, if someone wanted to come in the last year and get a permit for a four-unit building, as long as they can meet the current lock coverage and the setbacks. They could have done it, the state law, the second it goes into law, whether your bylaws say it or not, is the law of the state, we are Dylan's rule state, what we. Town of Swanton is a party of the state of Vermont, it only exists to help the state of Vermont, only like, that's, towns only this. Collect taxes and do things state doesn't wanna do themselves. That's, that's, that's the reality. Um. He wanted a lot more lock coverage, he wanted a lot more lock coverage.
For where?
But he could have come in and done it, yes.
Yep.
That's why the state.
Yeah, but because it's now currently state law, so it could have been done before.
I told him that a hundred times, he just went.
You can get apartment right now.
Yeah.
Most of this stuff, you could.
Yes. I did, I put a permit in.
Did change?
Hmm.
Did you lot, did?
A lot of lock coverage is changed, pretty much every district.
He always.
Except for, except for the shoreline.
Yes.
Yep.
Parking, um, three, four.
It's only increased substantially, I mean, by six.
I think we're at like sixty-five percent.
In the village, sixty-five in the village. Something like that, up from thirty-five or forty in the village.
Thirty.
Thirty, and something like that, so substantially made.
Thirty-five, yeah.
And we gotta, we don't call building coverage anymore, we do lock coverage.
Over again.
Cause I would have caught, I personally would have caught you guys on the building coverage, you know, but again, a building is a thirty-five percent, it doesn't matter to me, right, what is, you only ask for building coverage.
Yeah.
We went to a lot of coverage. Uh, parking spots. Uh, I just threw in a subsection nine here. This is just to meet the state law, basically, you know how a lot of times park, we don't have that rough of parking requirements, that's why I didn't have it in here, cause you guys allow parking in front of buildings and things like that already.
It's been on my newest apartment, that P.
But if they're.
Rocking sidewalks to.
So this, this says now, any pre-existing parking spot that are currently legal, non-conforming, child count, or requirements. For the number of spaces when expanding existing residential uses, say you have a three-unit apartment building. Say. It's got enough, you can't make them rework their parking if they wanna add a fourth unit. Because the parking's not far enough back, or it's in the front lawn, even if you do that on a new build, where it's completely new. Where anyone's adding that one unit, you can't make them re, redo that, cause a lot of towns, they can make you go to the rear of the building, but your parking might be on the side of the building, and they're not gonna make you rebuild it to add one unit.
Um, I would, and I, I don't know how you guys feel, and I don't even know if it's a zoning, or maybe it's a, um.
It's a zoning thing, oh, it's, could be an ordinance too.
That's where I was going, I don't know if it's better off in a zoning or an ordinance, but Joel, I don't know how you would feel about. It's more of a village issue. Um, and maybe we just make the village issue, but there's a lot of parking happening on. Front lawn, so it's terrible. Then there's non-driveways, and, and it's not like once in a while, or a party, it's like.
Very young.
Everyday vehicles, or, or.
Should be a village ordinance.
A village ordinance, you think?
Yeah, cause I mean, the majority of.
Then the PD can police it.
What's that?
If it's a village ordinance, then the PD would police it.
Yeah, somebody get a ticket for parking on the front lawn.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think.
Here, it's harder because they're scared to complain here, or if it's an ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know, but I mean, that'd be my thought.
That does sound, I think, they put it so you couldn't put a driveway in the front lawn. But then the green space, you couldn't park in the green space part, is the ordinance.
And I would, what I would do is put a tiny. Days in a row or something, but we got some, like, the whole front lawn is like, and if it's not parking, it's chunks.
The only other, uh. Spot that they brought up, I didn't get it till yesterday. Uh, I thought it was gonna be an easy add-in, it's twenty-one pages long. Of the new flood standards.
Well, there you go, we're not gonna, we were at one seventy-eight, we're back to two hundred.
Oh, wow, I'm gonna pull out our current flood stuff, but it's not twenty-one pages long, and stick this in, I just haven't done that yet, so.
And is that a. So that's not something you can just reference with a per BSA, da, 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 this is, this is a copy of.
No. Yeah, I'm actually thinking this needs to be. Its own section, you know, like, section through ten, I think you gotta add a section. This becomes like section seven, wherever it fits in, and we just slide it.
Especially with some of our.
Cause it's what's written that way, cause it's got. Our authorization's got the purpose, it's got this, like, news, yeah, sort of like, additional use and permit stored, like, it's literally got, what can kinda go in there, I can look and see if. It's got the corridor, river corridor boundary, then it's got flood hazard protection areas. All the stuff that's regulated by FEMA. And ultimately has to go in, um. But they made it sound like it was just a little bit of language. Um, and some of this, like, we'll stick in other sections, but. Like, a lot of these, like, here, where eligible, a permit shall only be issued by the administrative officer, which is zone administrator. Only in accordance with the law, you know, the state law, permit shall be, you know, it's. Well, we'll look at all of them, and I can give a rundown of this, this is also something, if you guys wanted to take more time on, we still pass the regular bylaws as is. And like, these are all definitions, I'll make sure we have these definitions in here.
I mean, if it's something you can copy and paste and.
I mean, it's not a direct copy-pasting like this, I gotta go through and, okay.
Are those are actual definition, definitions, they go along with the river corridor, or we've gotta add to, I get you.
We might already have, yeah. So like, some of this stuff, we, we're gonna, I'm gonna go through, I gotta go through our definitions, I just.
Top of slow.
I booked the whole afternoon to do this, and then when I opened this up, I'm like, cause I got it yesterday, I'm like, that's, that's not. But this is a day's project in itself, just to, all this stuff, so we just gotta. I can have it in by the end of the weekend, I just. But the language is here, so I thought we'd just look at it.
Yep.
Uh.
But it looks like a lot of stuff that is just top of the base, it's matter of putting it in the proper location.
Like, I gotta go through our definitions and make sure these are in the right order.
Designated center and.
We might already have that stuff.
Now, what I would say is, some of those definitions may, however, be direct links to statute already, um. So they shouldn't have any issue for directly already, like, where I say that is flood hazard, if we've got a direct link to state statute.
Yeah, but I, I can guarantee we don't have. Blue vial erosion, which means erosion, or scaring, like, that's not.
That's a, that's a scientific term, we're talking.
Yeah, and that's not our bylaws. Uh. You know.
And now maintenance, like, I just don't mean, that's what's up, maintenance, these periodic guys, keep up conditions, change in material, there's got, is this condition in the hazard area, so. That's written directly for flood zones, but it could be taken into consideration elsewhere.
So we'll, I'll look, if there's anything that seems spicy, I don't recall it in here, I'll call out our public meeting, and we can, the nice thing is, our next step is a public meeting, we can talk about this part at a public meeting.
Yep.
Cause that's where you gotta, we must officially vote on making, use your local bylaws to send to the select board.
Which half the one we scheduled for, seven, eight, seven, eight, seven.
So this, I'll work in, and we'll go over that, and we can make those changes that night, um. There's that one, and then there's a small adjustment, I think, just clarification on, on site, uh. She thought she had language, which she doesn't, so I gotta write that, it's accessory on-farm business stuff, basically allows permitted use of on-farm commercial operations that include, one or both of the following, the storage, preparation, or sale, uh, qualifying products, promotional merchandise, baked goods, or education. Recreation on social events that feature agricultural products or qualifying products, or both. You may require a site plan for that. If somebody wants to.
We may not have. We may not have to.
Yeah.
Making it easier for.
You can do a site plan, or you don't have to, like, if someone wants to do. Think last year you had, you, like, if someone wants to do the, uh. Maze.
Yep.
When they say it's educational, cause it gets kids on the farm. That technically has to be a permanent accessory on-farm business. If it's part of the farm.
Part of the farm, and we obviously will refer to RAS.
Yeah. So that's, that's base, that's basically where we stand, um, unless there's any other comments, basically.
Does that not be a section by itself?
That's what I'm thinking, is that.
Strictly.
Yeah. So then what I'll do is in our, our, our flood hazard overlay, I'll say reference section, that's why, like, you see a lot of highlight in there, because I have section four, reference section four point two. I gotta go back now, we're gonna add another section, that might become section five point two.
Everything's gonna be shut down.
Yeah, so we gotta just figure out where it fits in, and then it'll be its own section, and then it'll be parts, like, the definitions won't stay in that section, they'll go to the definitions.
Nobody go on elsewhere.
And, uh, some of this other stuff will go, um.
And what, is there any?
So this tells you when a state permit's required. So like, bridges, culverts, channel management, forestry and agriculture.
Thinking about, um. Uh, somewhere in a flood plain that had to tie down some sheds. Is there anything in there regarding that? I'm just curious, do you remember?
It's the state.
That was a state thing, right?
Yeah, it was.
So my assumption is it, it must be somewhere in there, as that's in a flood plain, flood hazard zone.
That should be, yes.
Okay, that, that's all I was.
Yep.
I'm assuming that came from the state, that's why.
Yeah.
And we don't have to look into it now, or just if you see something like that, um. They had to, for shed sales, had to tie down sheds.
Isn't it, and this doesn't only go pertaining to where you. Doesn't, it's only pertaining to. Yeah, again, this one pertains with a flood hazard overlay. Hazard overlay.
Is that uh so that's it from regional and then the maps, obviously.
Oh, we have salt pump maps, um. We got the new maps. That'll be in here and. So the two issues we talked about last week. Uh not over here. Talk about that in a minute. Is behind uh.
And yeah, Joel would be interested to know.
So what we did.
Lafar Street, right?
Uh that was, was that Lafar and John again, Lafar and John, I think, the corner.
S- so like right in here.
Lafar is the village now.
It's not the same as a village, it's just commercial central business.
So we converted. The corner essentially where Funny Door and Windows was.
Mm-hmm.
And the creamy place.
Yep.
To uh commercial light.
Mm-hmm.
Uh out of the industrial, because there's already a ton of housing and then it was all of those. Right where the DR is.
Right.
Um tha- that's a bunch of houses and then there was that one chunk that was Funny Door and Windows, that was kind of not. Really an industrial type use, it was kind of mixed now, so. Uh and that was honestly a conversation I had with um Adam Dos, he he asked me about like, hey, what if I wanted to turn that into housing? Because we were talking about the house and stuff, because it was industrial, it's not really a possibility. So we thought that changing those lots and those houses there, getting them out of the industrial, turning it to the commercial light. Then there's the possibility to have a little bit of mixed. Ease them into the industrial zone a little bit better.
Right, what's that one large law? Um I think that's what TDI is. But uh TDIs here.
The cheese, I went, I think we went up to the cheese plant.
I think that lot is, I don't know what that is. We just stayed on that side of the road.
Yeah, cause I I'm, we've gotta do a cover in there, so I'm familiar with this, I don't remember what.
Hold on, I'll show you, Joel, I got it right here on this.
That's the duty of the.
On X. Um so actually it's showing. That is all being drawn again. It shows on there, it's two separate lots, but on here, it's owned by the cheese plant. This lot you're talking about?
Yeah, there are two lots here, the cheese plant, one is the cheese plant.
The cheese plant has two, but one's not there, that's there uh.
Might be their pond there, even though they don't.
Oh yeah, it does look like that.
That's all the lagoons, that's all we're often.
The lagoons I covered up on the other street.
So that should be industrial. That should go with this property.
Well, but they're already there industrial.
Put it on there, it looks like it's drawn, zoom zoom in by the DR. Um. From. From what I'm seeing, this and this. Are one law. This is the, yeah, this is TDI. This is the old Mylan, this is the cheese plant, and then this is also part of the cheese plant, so that should be.
That is a separate lot there.
It's a separate lot that's owned by them, I mean, I I'm. But I think Joel's right, uh from here, it looks like it's like a ponds or is there uh settlement ponds or something there maybe?
The cheese plant, where where's the cheese plant?
Isn't it over here?
True. The D is.
No way.
I guess. Right there. They've got some ponds and they pump. They did pump. And that pipe comes from the pond over here. They pump, they pump up to the sewage plant. They plant over in here, they've got uh nine acre, seven or nine acres over here. Right. The cheese plant does? Yes, that they pump to, that's their. That's where their lagoons are, cause I know there's a pipe, I know there's a pipe that comes right through here.
Right here.
Okay.
There's the villages, there's the cheese plant.
Yeah, so that is, yeah.
John again real tree, okay, yeah, I see what you're talking about.
They actually had three bars.
So so. So there's not something right on there right now that I.
So this is showing, but what this is showing is on exit, because it's joint, it's owned by the same people.
Right.
This is showing it as one lot, but up there, it's drawn as two lots.
Right. Right.
Um so. My personal opinion would probably be to move that purple down, so that all of the cheese plant properties stay in industrial. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Um so Corey, so you know, like all.
Then just just give it a.
Just this little piece of pie right here.
Yeah.
But these, these are all homes, I think there's maybe a couple of single whites right here, this is that apart, that's that apartment building.
Yes, sir.
Um which was, I think, industrial before. Um but anyways, we we turned this all into that neighborhood.
Commercial light, whatever, um. So it allows housing for that. So we.
And and Adam went to our, with a couple of things, he said that were uh not permitted in that district. That he was, was it dog grooming in that building?
Yes, there was somebody.
So if they took it, and I'm assuming. Not to make too much mud, muddy water. But the creamy stand got probably permitted as an accessory to.
With uh.
Naval City. Being there could be my assumption, and now it's just the creamy stand and they don't.
Which don't be.
No, the creamy stand's real.
We we probably wanna rework this, we said we wanted a lot of housing in here, they made it residential, but you don't want it just to be residential, you got a gas station here, this was to get at.
Commercial light, lights, yes, and that was, though we're jumping over to.
Yeah, I know where that one is, near the Lemoore Valley rail trail.
Yeah. And the reasoning there, Amy and and Joel, just so you guys are up to speed. Um this again was how the conversation started with Adam Dos.
Right.
Um none of this property due to. Wedge.
Yeah.
Due to site, like the site in general. And it's also grade wise, it's it's it was zoned industrial. But he can't put an industrial building in there, because it physically excavation wise, foundation wise, size wise, would be very difficult to try and make a. Wow, place to put anything in there. Um so that's why we made the 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 thought was if they were able to put some housing in there, it's much easier to potentially put some smaller structures in there. And with water and sewer having just gone right by there, um it would be an easy place for someone to build out some water and sewer.
Yeah, that was actually an industrial park. The town owned that.
Yeah, well, and it goes to the.
For a while, but. We would had to put almost two million in infrastructure, just to get it ready for someone to go in there.
Yep.
The town didn't have that kind of money, so we sold it.
That was a railing company.
That was gonna put the natural gas compression site in there.
I remember that.
And then the oil.
Yep.
Dropped significantly and it wasn't feasible, so they backed out of there and.
And that's when they bought it, I think, I think they were looking potentially at a cream. Tori there.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Um and then now they were like looking at the, and and the down by Lafar and the ST. I think from that brook, that's a brook that runs through there kind of thing, or whatever that line is, um.
That's just the road.
Oh, that's the road that goes to the box site.
Goes over the generator and the uh brush, not brush, but the compost.
Yep, so the 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 lower side of that road though is fairly wet too, was the other, like a good chunk of that property.
There is some oil laying down there, just the. The town's looking, and this is from, would be planning, but this is where we're gonna put the parking area, it's the LBRT. Maybe working with Adam, I talked to him, we get about a twenty-foot swath.
Uh Lafar?
Yeah, not Lafar, but um. Right near the interstate, so snowmobiles and others could get a big gas station right there.
Oh, that would be great, so that would help us, here's the other conversation we just had with um uh Amy. From regional. Because of this whole trans, I don't even know how to describe it, Corey, can you describe this a little?
Yeah, so.
And you'll want to hear this too.
So the new Act Two Fifty maps that are coming out in the fall. They started being, so basically you're gonna be, you're gonna be a tier one A of B, tier two, tier three, what does that mean very generally, tier one means. Grow, 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 you're not gonna need Act Two Fifty for a lot of the units, tier two basically means Act Two Fifty rules are the same, tier three means we're going back to the stone ages. Um you know, it doesn't build as well.
So it's actually.
But because we don't.
Have.
So all this is transitionary zone in her map. And it's because regional planning is really sticking to the sidewalk plan. And infrastructure and.
If they zone it as tier one. No Act Two Fifty requirements for units, number, numbers of units.
Like up to seventy-five.
Okay, so we're talking big, big.
Right now it's at ten, you need Act Two Fifty.
Our our southern growth district. Is not tier one, it's transitional, because it doesn't have walkable, bikeable access, meaning sidewalks.
Or a plan or a capital, if you had a capital plan to put sidewalks in there, then you could get.
So the conversation with Amy, with Amy, with, I don't know why I called her Amy.
Catherine.
Catherine.
Catherine was, well Catherine, we've got a rail trail that goes right to the heart of our community. If we have a walking path from like this property to that rail trail. That's walkable. And that should be exempt from that, and then the same would go down in the southern growth, because. If we were somehow to put a walking path, but they're saying southern growth is on a island out there, which in in some regards it is. But the thought would be that if we had a walking path. From let's say, who that would help would be a person like Richard Cummings Development out there.
Right.
If if we could connect him to, if we could connect Richard.
But she said that wouldn't work if you connected it to the LDRT, other rail.
Because she's saying that was a stretch.
Basically what.
We were to put a rail trail into the rail trail, then you could get to downtown St. Albans without having to deal with. Putting literal sidewalks down two oh seven and access ramp, which is a.
But all 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 you guys need to do, you know, you don't have one yet, you. Split ten grand a year or five grand a year for capital claim, which unlocks your future growth. And then they think you could probably satisfy it and just have it sit in reserve, kids would felt ever actually did want to come in and build there, and you could get out of Act Two Fifty. I would talk to her about that, I think it's kinda. She can do the same thing to the town of St. Albans and they don't like sidewalks either, or want to pay for them.
I do, I mean.
It's her thing, sidewalks are Catherine's thing.
Oh, that's that's a reg, yeah, that's been a regional thing since I was on policy project review.
Every Act Two Fifty application.
Didn't they make the Subaru dealer put a sidewalk in and all that?
Bud too.
Yeah.
Bud's Bud's parking trucks on them.
We have.
They'll never connect that across that, that, rent, like.
No, no, she's gonna make it, so you guys gotta build a sidewalk here. And then there won't be another sidewalk, cause it's gonna go up the other side of Bud's, cause you gotta get across the two hundred six. Well, I was at the town of St. Albans when that was happening, and we wanted to take, and Handy's was willing to do it. Put the money in a fund and we could build a sidewalk where we wanted up there.
That was.
Had she done that, it would have got the Walmart sidewalk far enough where the bank would have to build theirs. Their deal with the town is they didn't have to build a sidewalk till a sidewalk showed up to their lot. And so they could have had to build theirs, and basically it would have been enough money with Handy's money, we would have had a sidewalk from Price Chopper to Walmart, which is. A pretty good strat.
Decent job.
You know what I mean, someone could have parked in one of those spots and walked it, it leaves a good, but it would all been paper, but now it's on the wrong side of the road. Same thing with the new other four dealership, we wanted them to take that, that was argued, that money too would have brought us almost right down.
Put us somewhere else, you'd have somewhere more useful.
A little somewhere. Yeah, in the same area of town, but just more useful.
So I don't know, and that's another conversation probably Joel, when we finish this. And if you could maybe make a note to remember to circle back to sidewalk plan and working with um. The select or to just like. I think that's gonna be some of the stuff we'll have to take on when we're gonna put this to bed in the next. Our hope is to put this to bed obviously by summer, and then maybe coast for a couple of months, we've been pretty damn busy. And then uh come fall again, like start back up and maybe that be some of the stuff.
Yeah, it'd be good if we're gonna do that this early fall, so that we can put it into our budget line, I don't. Go for twenty twenty-six.
Does that make sense?
And that's just to get at, cause you're not gonna want this part of your town to be an active, you don't want those seventy-five units out active fifty. Touch down.
We want to grow.
More of this area than probably up by Adams.
Yeah, if we're gonna grow our tax base, and the biggest reason why Adams was popping out to me was obviously the new water and sewer that's going.
There.
If someone can tap into that, it's.
The other, the other project well goals here, and we'll have a better idea if this passes, Joel, but I'm lobbying on this right now, Harvard, lead lobby group on it. We are this close to passing project based TIF. It's gonna be called the chip program. Which means you don't have to have a townwide vote and a developer can basically take out with an agreement with the town and do their own TIF to one parcel or an adjoining parcel. So they would be able to use their growth there to bring in water, sewer, roads. All the stuff they need to build, pay for infrastructure, and then there. The way it'd work is the town, then we'd get the money from the state, the state, the town hand it over to the developer, they'd pay their debt service for that TIF. But instead of taking a townwide TIF like St. Albans had to do. It would be a one parcel tip and you basically can put it on the developer, but the state's about to legalize that for the first time, which is a big news, I think, to your district, cause you have a couple of single property owners. Who are very, who probably wouldn't want to bring, you know, all the infrastructure in from the city, but now. Especially because there's so much land one of them has, or these lots they have, could build a. Five hundred homes or build a big thing in there and would actually probably pay for that infrastructure. Now you would lose. The town's part of that is whatever the state chips in as part of the infrastructure, you're allowed to use up to eighty percent. The town has to match, so forty-six percent of their Ed Fund payments go to debt service, forty-six of their municipal taxes for twenty years have to go to that, but you still get some growth. That we'll know by the time I send your select board, I can talk about that too, but that'll be a good legislative update from your legislators. Um and I think it'd be pretty big for a community like yours, um who may not. Have the staff and want to take on the whole TIF district. But a project based TIF or basically a developer.
Or more on the developer's hands.
Yeah, and they can use those funds to pay their debt service.
I get you.
Um we straightened out this arch.
Lots.
I see that, that's.
That was the ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we could find why there was an arc in it.
So we just, there there's like an, I don't know exactly. Then we just, we just took out the arc.
And and I mean. It's not to say too much, but it's also similar to our um Native American overlay. It's listed in our bylaws, but we don't know where it is. And we can't find any information on it.
It's not on the map anywhere. But we didn't want to take it out and create a stir.
But we didn't want to pull it, I I mean, we, if I knew where it was, I'd be happy to talk about it and expand it, but there's no information on where the Native American overlay is.
Should the southern growth be straight on that property line?
I think they just squared it off to some.
Yeah, they, I just.
Over, yeah, should that be straightened up?
Here.
That's what David Hubbard and Saint Beer.
Saint Beer owns, one and Hubbard owns the other one, so basically that that part of the lots wouldn't be in it, will that make a difference?
Well, you guys have it, so that wherever the majority of your lot is, what district it's in, so that looks like a majority to me.
I would say that's good, yeah.
The only one probably that'd be questionable is this lot here.
And that would be a. That.
Maybe Oliver. No, it's high gear road, that's probably.
It's the uh.
Is that right, Gadju? There look. On X, man.
No, that's uh. Where's the infirmary?
Trombley.
Probably, yes.
The excavator next to Gadju's, yep, Gadju's is that square below it, yep.
Those.
Probably buttoned the back there. Uh would be my assumption.
So that's, we'll make the change, like we'll make those two changes for the public meeting. So the process from here, obviously we'll talk about it, but we'll do a final presentation at May seventh. Which is basically a public meeting. Then once the public meeting closes, you guys vote to send it to the select board.
Okay.
At that moment. Anybody who comes in for a permit can get a permit under these even before the select board through.
Okay, so explain that to Joel, so he can explain it to the select board.
Second, the select. The second, the planning commission, state statute sends it to the select board and you guys have, I think it's sixty days to act on it or something like that. It becomes the rules of the land until you tell, oh, we'll either send it back or vote something out or pass something different, but it actually becomes a ruling, you don't technically have to pass it. For somebody to get a permit with those conditions.
But we have the option to kick it back.
Yeah.
Which, and then.
But they're maybe.
Get their permit. And. And then it must stay, I would imagine, because the permit's been issued. But if there's something we see that we got issues with.
We can then adjust it and then come back.
Interesting, okay.
That's that's just the way this this state's done, I think it's because technically, once you pass it, it still has, I think, a thirty or sixty day period. Some of can appeal the changes you've made, like in town to come in and make an appeal and.
So it can be a much longer.
Pretty kind of thing before the permanent bylaws.
Right, oh yeah, I could see where the select board and the planning commission, if they didn't work together, could kick it down the road.
Mm-hmm.
Years, months.
Although this this stuff can pick. Even I told these guys, you get to play, but you just gotta stop, understand there might be still some things you want to tinker with, but you you do slight adjustments, cause. It's like anything else, you can, we can do this, we can go back to this and apply nine hundred other changes, I'm sure. It's just, you know, you're gonna have a permit or some, there's always a situation that comes up, you're like, ah.
When you're designing a multi-million dollar project, at some point, you gotta say we're close, we'll handle the rest and. That's when we find the.
Yeah.
Change or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's and and what I would say.
And the state's gonna mess with you guys every year, we we try to do a site state statue as much as possible. Because the state, I guarantee you housing is their biggest issue, it's the thing they can do to feel good about what they're doing down there. I mean, to solve our education crisis, they need grandness growth, to solve our healthcare crisis, they need people, solve. Everything, so it all falls on the conversations on their housing and next year, I mean, they're gonna. I I could foresee where they're gonna set where those waters were seventy percent minimum loss coverage. Developers are asking for that now and people are open to it, no parking requirements. You just gotta, can't require more than one spot or even any, so like. They're gonna get aggressive in the next.
Church parking lot would be cool.
Or what they're gonna, what they're gonna do is not allow towns not have off-street parking, you know, in Burlington where you have a lot of one-way streets.
Yeah.
This parking takes a path of road. That is not part of that.
And so what that's gonna do for you, and you know, the hard thing is is when we're citing state statute is.
Yeah. But good.
You're gonna have to recheck it every time. Not every time, but like.
But like once a year.
Every year, like they they just wanna change.
Especially in definitions where they change like. We had accepted agricultural practice, they're now required agricultural practice, we just cite state statues so that like they ever change the definition of something.
So if someone comes in and asks, well, what does that mean, you can't just. I mean, you might have it printed out, but you can't just be like, well, flip to the back of the book, it's gonna be like, I gotta pull up state statue and here's the printout today type of thing. And that printout six months later, but like this picture makes a change, could be.
E- even, there's a few bylaw changes, they're small this year, the state's actually suspending the process you need to approve it, basically the planning commission can vote all of the state. I think they're actually gonna keep it permanent, so in the future, when the state makes a change, like those changes went through today that are just required by state that you can't stop and you can't stop.
We're just gonna pass.
They come in, they pass you and it becomes part of your bylaw, they don't have to go to you, they don't have to require a rewrite, they don't, it's just because. The state's basically playing, keep shouting stuff down your guys' throats, I feel like, at least don't make them go through a six-month process every time you do it.
Uh, it's tougher, small town.
Yeah.
To to even keep up with it, so the state's gonna say, hey, it's what statue, just.
Well, even some of the stuff last year when we worked on this, we didn't. We were trying to write certain sections.
They was waiting for it to come out.
Cause we knew something was coming, I'd be like, oh, I think this happened, oh, no, they did this, and something, you were just writing the section to like.
And part of, you know, taking a long time and and Joel, I mean, you've been involved in this long before I was involved in zoning here. But I I think at least in my whatever fifteen years, um. This is the most adept we've ever been on any of our bylaws for like a rewrite and really getting in things, at least since I've been around.
Oh yeah, that's interesting. Even if there's a good change to talk about and like each section basically got a night or two.
It's just a like. Yeah, of like conversation, and I know you know that, it's just, it feels like we've been doing this for so. Freaking long, and it's like, oh my god, but it's like, like Cory said, things get changed and then they change again and it's like. Wow, can't keep track of it, so anyways.
Yeah, well, you guys made a lot of good suggestions at that joint meeting, so we came back in and put those in.
Moved some stuff around.
You know, we created a forum in here where when a new owner association is created, at least the town's notified of it. Not much we can do, but you know, that whole stormwater stuff and they have to out, they have to update the town and at least give a contact name so the town know.
Yeah.
And we took that stuff into consideration.
So the map. I know, I know Jim was uh had a lot to say about this at our last meeting, um, and I'm just back, I understand Amy's here to talk about it too.
Yeah.
Oh.
Um, so will you show me?
Zoom, it's gonna be the Southern Nata Tabor Point.
So all of that. So does it go back two hundred and fifty feet?
The 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 thought process was this. The state has been, and again, it went back to what we just talked about, was citing statute. Those were the state's requirements and in that zone, they're gonna oversee, just like Joe Joel mentioned, they let me go over twenty percent with some sort of remediation for the block coverage. The thought process was. Whatever their stipulations was within their zone. If they continue to change those things, it's only gonna change here more. And to simplify things, if the state's gonna let it fly in that district and in that two hundred and fifty feet or the edge of the road. Why are we gonna make any more work for us?
They they don't do setbacks or anything.
Right.
We have the setbacks, we have the setbacks.
Okay, I saw that on.
We had the setbacks, but essentially I wanted to make it clear so that if something wasn't straddling or whatever, like.
Basically, you get a shoreline permit, you can get a permit with the town, as long as you meet the setback.
The problem with this district or this um section of town. From Hog Island Road over. Is there all.
Homes.
There, but they're all um.
They're all single-family homes.
Right, that's not what I'm trying to say. They are all um.
Non-conforming lots.
Yes, so.
For certain extent, but we looked at a lot of those lots and they are all, there's, there are some smaller ones down by the drive in the R.
Yeah, yeah.
Which is essentially in that twenty, two hundred and fifty feet, like if you zoom in the airport. You'll see and and we looked at a lot of them, like there's the road, that two hundred and fifty feet goes to some of those long skinny and everything to the left of that blue. Was.
Well, our our lot. Stops at two hundred and fifty feet or what is it?
Starts or stops?
Stops, so to two hundred, so it's not like it goes that far beyond.
But if your lot stops at two hundred, then you're within the shoreline.
It's not what I'm, I'm not concerned about.
Here's your problem really, isn't it?
Mine so much is a lot of the other people have small lots and they won't be able to build anything.
So state statute says any pre-existing small lot. Is allowed and then any lot, you know, if you double them up and it's still not a full one, is getting it further compliance with their bylaws allowed.
Yes, there's a certain degree of it. But the problem you come into is you've got one set of rules for everything that's white, you've got a different set of rules along the shore. The state takes care of what's along the shore, but they are not the ones that are issuing the permits for what's being built here. So let's keep conformity. In a certain area around that, even on both sides of the road, so that we keep get away from. People being upset because this one can do it, but I can't do it.
But that's grief in every district, but we've had this conversation, that's grief in every district, you could say the same where it transitions from the village to. Not the village, you could say the same, eh, you know, in other parts of town, you could say the same on McQuam Shore Road.
That's what I'm was bringing, gonna bring up.
And and across in my vision, across the road from McQuam, your son's law is very much different than your law. And Valencourt's law is very much different than the law across from him. And my Uncle John's old house is a very much different piece of property than that, the house crossed the road from that, this is my personal opinion and the way I view that.
Yeah. Okay, you can get into the lot size. But if you go to the other side of Hog Island. What about the uses you're dropping out possibly?
So.
A marina or boat storage.
There.
Those, those are not gonna be possible.
You know.
If anything, we're hoping.
Down in this area. Let's say someone wants to do boat storage, that come, that has come out.
A good chunk of that.
I mean, it came out of conservation, it got put in the, I think.
Yeah, we put that in R O one now.
I didn't, I didn't see boat storage in there today when I looked at it.
For boat storage, I mean, but that's residential.
Right, but so before, before we had, what's that?
Was it, I don't know if that was in conservation either though.
But yes, it was, what about your? So what you're doing is you you're changing a fair amount of, not a fair amount, but some of the permitted uses, I don't own any land out there, so it's not an issue with me. It's just, I think you wanna be careful of.
I under, I don't disagree.
Some of that possibilities.
And I was, my personal view and and intention was making it equal, what what makes. That any different than McQuam Shore in my vision?
Well, there are some small lots across the street from McQuam Shore as well.
There are, there's not many.
And people aren't going to be able to do.
But McQuam Shore doesn't go as far back as affected.
So any lot. Let's say to McQuam Shore from. Here. There's a section down here that used to be in the R three. And that borders up against state land, that's the reason why.
Is that the new map or the old map?
That was the old map, and that one goes back six hundred feet. This all goes back six hundred feet and then this all was in the Southern Growth or in the shoreline.
And that one too, yeah.
Yeah, and that one too.
That we put in there because you asked for it.
What?
That point, that blue changed, that was, that's recent, within the last five years.
Yes, I, yes, I remember that.
And. The. I mean, it's a board decision, so I'm just stating my personal opinion and and where that came from. And my view of McQuam Shore is the road, the left-hand side, the right-hand side of the road are two completely different pieces of property for ninety-nine percent down through there.
That's, and part of that's cause originally it was three acres.
Three acre minimums.
When I first, when I first got here, it was three acre minimum and someone knows, when they were subdivided, they went to the three acres. And we said, wait a minute, that's crazy.
We went, yeah.
So we dropped it down to one acre, but by then there wasn't much left to subdivide.
Right, houses had been built.
Right, just, it was pretty much south of James Road.
Yep.
But even there wasn't much, you could be subdivided there.
So when you, when I made this statement about my property, I couldn't see that it was actually um shoreline. Two hundred and fifty.
That, yeah.
I didn't, I didn't even know that that was there, so that.
So that essentially what we were attempting. And my thought process when I talked about it was some uniformity, now I know Jim still has a beef with. The north side of seventy-eight. But again. That's in a similar like, you drive down um Charco Creek Road, whatever that's called.
Ingles Bowl.
Ingles.
Is that Campbell's Way there?
Yeah.
That's residential, that's not shoreline, other than those couple houses on the right, the houses on the left. Out where the newer houses and Betty Funnier and those people, that's not shoreline in my opinion, so why is it zoned shoreline?
Why do we have to split up the whole area into different spots and so on, let's keep it simple.
That's what I'm doing.
Can I add something?
A river from Lake.
Keep the whole thing simple, this is all.
Well, no matter what, they have to follow two different sets of rules anyway, cause one will be regulated by the state and one's not.
Yeah, that was, that was the complete, that's the simplicity that I was thinking.
Yeah, it's regulated to a degree by the state. But there are some other things that come on in, now we had someone come before the board, the last D R P meeting. Did not, did not meet the size of a lot for what they wanted to build. But the state says, oh yes, you meet it.
Yeah.
But there's no survey of it, it's what the state said because all those lots were done with not going to the medium. Uh, water level.
When, I I'm so.
When, many years ago. Nineteen seventies or before, sixties.
So the state gave them a permit, but we wouldn't.
Yep.
I'm trying to understand.
Because they're not, we need a standard of what is set up for, in other words.
The state approved it twenty-six percent. But they couldn't get it cause the town doesn't run.
And so that was my, that's my point, the state's gonna give them a permit to build some, you you're, you're help of my point.
Well, if they can't have that amount of land and they're not being built for that amount of land and we cannot do it with our survey. Now, most people wanna build, tear down their house and start over again, they can survey their property and they'll.
Ten thousand dollars.
I know, uh, survey is about talk, you get a survey.
But.
We got one of them down there that. And I think, I think what. You might be talking about Jim is the issue of what the state uses in their permit is, I think it's the median lake level. And you can look it up and get what that depth is and then that's, what's that?
Thirty-five.
And that's what you use for determining this.
Square footage, the area.
The setback from that and also the coverage.
True.
And then what you're saying is people have surveyed the lots and they do it. From a different. No, when they surveyed the lot today, they do it to proper, but originally, cause lots were not surveyed that way.
Oh, okay.
They were surveyed to mean mark, so it's saying these people have bigger lot.
No, they're sort of like today, I mean, one.
They must have been the higher blogger.
Or it's certainly do line up through what the lake shore was and that's it.
So in that situation, I would take it, the basically, your argument is they haven't been paying for their their lot size. You guys as a town need to resurvey every lot to that and refix that on your town service.
And so, but again, and and here's what I would say, and I know you wear the hat as listener, Jim, but. That's not necessarily a problem that we can fix, as as the planners looking at this, like in in the way, that's that's one more reason, in my opinion, to say. In that two hundred and fifty feet or the edge of the road, if the state gives them a permit, they meet these setbacks. Give them a free permit, let them do their thing and wash their hands of it, whether or not they're paying enough money for their property is a, is a whole different issue, in my opinion. That that's how I would do it.
One thing I would do to fix that. Is some baggage regarding how the town determines lot coverage.
Was that something we would?
Yeah, so if you have a survey that's done. By some arbitrary line of lake level, hey, let's just say it's the high water mark.
Yep.
That's gonna be less acreage than the mean level.
Correct.
However.
Do we work off mean level, do we work off high water mark?
Yeah, I would think it's mean.
There are setbacks in the water level. I would assume, I mean, we can sell it out.
That's what, that's what the state, like when, as part of my permit, no construction was allowed.
Beyond that mean.
Be a certain distance from the mean and now I'd have to look at my permit, but that, I think it was a hundred feet maybe. You can't build your debt.
Within that.
Beyond that distance, but in determining where the. Well, the lot coverage issue to make it the same, because that's what state's gonna use and determine the percent of lot coverage, then. I would think that if there's a way we can define that, so that that gives a homeowner an opportunity to say, look, I. Acreage is this, even though the card's gonna say.
Something else.
Point four six, it might be point four eight, maybe that difference, and I can tell you every lot is different ones. Again, in quarter, you can always survey my stuff.
Yeah. Oh, we found, we found at one of our properties, they found some funky stuff that took a ton of time to figure out and that was only in January, it was in.
What's interesting is I don't know what. That particular homeowner must have, their engineer, whoever prepared their permit for them. Came up with their acreage to use as their baseline. I use the base.
They went by the tax.
Which they came up with. Right, that's what. They had a shoreline. They, the state would have required it as part of the permit, someone would have had to say. This is what my exist in, I use the acreage from my my uh. Tax.
Transfer.
That's what I used.
Yeah.
But. If someone, most people have engineers prepare those permits, I drew up my own stuff and submitted it, the engineer might have. Taken a quick look and done their calculation of the acreage and that's what they submit on that form and if the state accepts that. And that's what they're saying is the acreage is. So then, what you're, Joel, what you're saying is we can turn right around and say, okay, the state says you've got forty-four hundreds of an acre here. We're gonna increase it from the twenty-eight we have to forty-four hundreds of an acre without a survey.
Wow.
Well.
The the state's never gonna say how much land you have, they're gonna look at a survey.
Yes.
The state, they're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna see a difference.
When, when the, when the state gives you a permit, you have to bring in either an engineering stuff or or a survey. The state's not gonna go out and survey your property for you, so when the, if the state says you have X amount of land, it's not the state saying it, it's whoever brought them the information.
Whoever whoever put it on the permit.
But I would assume someone at the state, if someone put on their permit, Jim, that I add point four acres. As opposed to your state, your your uh tax card says you only have point two five, it's probably gonna throw a red flag either there or here.
Well, it sounds like a great property, I would call it. I got four, four acres, I thought I had point two eight on the lake, I'm probably happy even if my taxes be more. Cause it's worth more and I can sell it for more and I can make. Because it's worth more and I can sell it for more and I can make more, like.
I mean, I'm assuming the state, they have access to, you know, GIS to see what.
That's shows on there.
Pretty accurate, right, and.
That's what's on my phone, is essentially what they've pulled through there.
So the difference, I would think, even they're reviewing. Wouldn't be a huge difference, but might be enough. Or in this case where one had one number.
Well, in this case, when you've got surveys, other people have surveyed right by there, they go out to the mean watermark. And their acreage got increased, now this guy is coming in, he wants to increase the size, he wants to tear down the house he's got there. Increase the size of it, but then he's over this, he can't increase it because of the twenty percent rule.
That's not our rule.
Well, that's the rule.
That's a state rule.
The state, the state rule, right, well, they can show the land is twenty percent, but we don't have twenty percent there.
Yeah. Coverage.
Right.
That's our rule.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's our rule in this area.
We just asked the state. We matched what they said.
Right.
So and if you want to, to give the variance for twenty one percent lot cover, if the state.
And that, and that was the point with the two hundred.
Wait, I agree, we can write it in here, if the state gives a variance for more, like you guys don't care, I wouldn't see where the town would care, we just did it because that's what the state required, we were gonna give more lot coverage.
If if they, that's the way I look at it, if the state says they can.
And that's what it approved is, if it said, if the state approved it, because the state approved this program permit.
That, that's my point, is if the state's gonna approve it and it and they are fine with it being that close to the lake and whatever they want. In my opinion, the state is being at times a little too harsh on some of this stuff when it comes to shoreline. So if the state's gonna give someone a permit, I don't want to impact. With something we might put in paper, on paper, that wouldn't give them a permit, like the state, in my opinion, is gonna be much more conservative than we would should be. Does that make sense? That that was the thought process with like. The two hundred and fifty feet edge of the road, if the state's gonna give you a permit in that zone, make it everywhere, they they say it happens, I don't care, because in my opinion.
Wait a minute.
And from my experience, they always go. Overboard more than what is probably possible, they're they're more conservative when.
They have engineers, they do enforcement, they do it on all shoreline, like they have staff that.
That's my.
The town doesn't nor will pay for it and the expertise.
They the land, their twenty percent is in the shoreline district. So yeah, the state may have said you could be at twenty three percent and you do these other things to make them happy. Ours still says twenty percent, so then you have to come in and either get a variance. Or something.
And in my opinion, it should be whatever the state gives someone, like that's that's.
We can, but it does.
Whether it is twenty.
It's very likely concerned to certainly, because if they own that amount of land. That the state says they own, then we need to survey on it so they're being taxed with the proper amount.
This isn't about taxes, though, thi- this meeting is about planning and zoning, but not about taxes.
I I, does does point two two and point two eight acres matter on your taxes at the end of the day? You have a million dollar house on the lake, you're talking a million or a million twenty five.
What was the difference?
At the end of the day, it's twelve dollars.
What was the difference?
Well, the state said there was something like, uh, I don't remember exactly what we had, I'll go get Steve and then I can tell you exactly what it is.
So I, yeah, we don't, we don't.
They said it was like. Uh, that he was all clear to go because he meets all the rules as far as the state's concerned, but he does not meet the spot rule. And he has to have a survey, he have been straightened up.
But that could happen. With. The survey. The state could say you got, you can have twenty four percent coverage. Under the shoreline rules, the state can say you can have twenty four percent if you do this, this and this.
Right.
Our rule still says twenty percent.
What?
So that 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 isn't.
They gotta follow our rule.
That isn't a survey or anything, that's just a difference, if we get a restriction of twenty percent, period.
I think, I think the survey and the.
This one may be related to the fact that the acreage is different between the car and the state, but you could have the same issue happen.
The difference is because the original. Subdivisions that were done for all of them down on Lakewood Drive. Were just simply done as a zip line up through. Now, people have wanted to convert to it the one time year round residency, they had to meet a certain standard, they had to go get a survey done to clear.
But that's no different.
Same way, and it's the same way here. This guy is, let's say he's being charged for thirty two hundredths of an acre, but he needs forty four hundredths of an acre to build that size of house that he wants to build. And the state says he's got enough land there by using the. The uh what they use for their survey, they had a sheet all drawn out.
So if somebody comes to the town and says they have more land than the town says they has, why don't you just adjust the card and start charging them more for taxes, I don't think many people are gonna come and tell you they have more land than they actually do. Why do we need a survey, isn't the state, they work enough?
But I mean, who would, you got a, whoever got a valid point, more land and structure, like. Like a quarter acre and uh three tenths of an acre. Eh eh what's the difference in price, the same house on a quarter acre and the same exact house on three tenths of an acre, what is the difference in taxes? Like what, I mean ballpark, are we talking? A percentage, like can we, can we do apples, are we talking a hundred dollars, are we talking? Three hundred dollar, we're we're not.
Well, what if mine's rocky and yours is good soil and mine like.
I.
I I'm just, I I think Ross, but I think we should put in language. In your situation where they let you put in a best management practice, you could go over twenty percent.
Joel's a good. I I think we put verbiage in to say that, if the state allows you to have more than twenty percent because of best management practices practices and you're following their state stipulated guidelines. Give them a permit, period, done, like.
The problem, I think you're gonna find, Jimmy, your surveys of those small lots, I'm getting sued for this right now. Everybody's fence is gonna be on someone else's property, everyone's property is gonna end, like you are gonna end up.
It's a whole nother.
But you know what I mean, like you started surveying down there and you're gonna have lots used in thirty years.
I guess it gets into, and I guarantee you, some perspectives. Where they already showing a maximum lot coverage, you put twenty percent, you do you have that figure subject to approved shoreline?
That's what I, that's what I've been trying to say.
Or, yeah.
I take it, and what I'm trying to do is take it out of your hands, because I know you got enough, like, like I said, if this, you know as well as I do, if the state gives someone a permit to do something along the shoreline. But they aren't letting them go hog wild, but let's face it, so.
Well, we did, we did, we did things like this, though, a hundred feet.
Make it easy and simple for you, what's what's the thought process?
And we did this.
We appreciate that.
Hundred feet from mean water level unless partial size or site limitations prevent, we could put the same thing here, twenty percent to match, and I'll cite the state statute, unless.
The state gives you more.
The state gives you more.
State approves a shoreline.
More.
Yeah, it's a good statement.
Because they're not gonna approve for them.
Right.
Or if they might in a real tight situation, but.
And in the thought process, and and I know, I know Jim has somewhat of an issue with the whole redoing pickle point area.
Well, I, I think, I think that, I think the issue is, is it was easier. To not have a separate, you know.
But but I was looking at this, you guys have, it's the same standard.
For what?
The only difference is the setback.
Yeah, no.
Twenty five feet or fifteen, and then the permitting uses.
Then just have it all rolled together and keep it the same thing.
So. If if you're in preexisting small lot, state law, why is you can build a house there, whatever you know.
Whatever, I'm good.
All my thought was is now all you gotta do is take it to the river.
Yeah, you can build a house.
Road, two fifty feet, ninety percent of that stuff is.
Well, that's, that's, so.
Then who who makes the decision, is it the DRB or is it the zoning administrator?
I don't. Because the lot.
Because the.
For that house.
For the setback and all that, right, that would save high complaining for varying thing, hey, it's a pre, they call a lot.
The maps, right.
It, but I mean, like, that's here, in my set back, these houses are all, yeah, are no different than these houses over here.
Close to Lake Shore with like a fifteen foot.
That's why I wonder. The same part of the.
And and we, when I changed this, Amy, I looked at all of these lots on here to make sure like, most, these are, they're not one acre, but they're, they're good chunks, the smaller lots were in that.
Uh. And the rural. Their preexisting small lot. You put that same section in, because that area has a lot of preexisting small lots.
Remember what we were, we were like zoning through it.
Kind of like what you had here.
Yeah. Yes, do you put, you put that into that?
That that's something we can do in the in the rural area where there's preexisting small lots, we don't change the map. But we say, if you're on a preexisting small lot, we might edit small on this, we'll give you a different setback, the only difference right now is. The fifteen foot setback.
For for what, sorry, I I didn't.
Between. From a setback perspective, that would hurt you.
Between rural.
Between what we have here and what we put in that.
Oh, you use that same chart in the rural districts?
Well, that's what I'm saying, because that's one of the, one of the big issues is.
Something like that.
Those small.
There's a setback.
This preexisting small lot.
Because state law or any.
Only other change is there's a few. Listed items, like I said, they're both storage.
If you want, if you wanna come up and even copy that one and and throw that in there, Corey, I'm fine with that, I do, my wife's after me, I. I got home at seven thirty last night from work and I'm getting.
We were here till nine thirty.
The the basically, um, this is, this is true here, so.
A lot is considered, you can call off, it's legally existed prior to adoption of a zoning bylaw that doesn't meet the current minimum lot size requirements. Basically, those lots are generally allowed to be developed for the purpose permitted in their zoning district, even if they don't meet current lot size standard, and this is just the AI piece, right in state law. I could have a tenth of an acre in a village and you could say it's not big enough to do whatever, I can put a house on it, too bad, because.
So for simplicity, should you add those?
No, not in every district, because at some point you get to the point where.
They're gonna.
There are so few preexisting small lots.
Change, because someone's bought two of them and put them together.
Right, to me, it makes those areas very similar, because one or two permitted or conditional uses difference and that's it.
Yes, um, and. That that was the only thought process there, just simplicity, um. I I'm, I think Joel's got a great idea and I'm happy, if you wanna pull whatever we were using out of shoreline. Uh Corey, and throw that into the R one, the residential district as if your lot is this size, point seven five acres, these are your setbacks. If it's point five acres.
That's what I meant, that too, yeah, yeah.
Just a, not all districts.
Just.
And then that lot coverage, you you know, talking about.
No, just for that district, it'll, it'll go to a lot.
If the state.
And and.
Lousy.
If the state gives them a septic permit to put in a leach field or whatever they need, a well in a leach field on a point three acre lot. I've had it, like, that's the way I look at it.
So for us to give, like, uh, the state does give wastewater permits for everything, that was in your notes from a month ago, so all we were asking in some instances that they show us the wastewater permit and then we're good.
Right. Right.
Right.
You can get, get something out of them, like. For the growth, kind of.
Right, but get it out of them, but but they're gonna only give you that if you have the engineer or someone committed a, you know, that's what I was trying to say.
One third of them. Yes, yep.
Yes.
Somebody proved it will work, why stop them?
Someone put their stamp on it, it ain't mine, I'm not worried about it, like, okay. I know you still have some stuff you want, do you want to do, bring us something more next time or?
No, all right, I'm concerned right now, what I can do is put a, with a uh. Make a statement to the point that we change it back to originally what it was. Shoreland to back to shoreline, just exactly the way it's on that map.
So, you wanna make a, you wanna make a motion to change that map back to, or to change the new map back to that.
That's right.
For the shoreline, for the shoreline, do we have a second? Here, no second.
I'll second it, what the hell.
Okay, is there a discussion? We can put a vote, no, for something. You know, and now here, no discussion, I think we've had plenty, put it to a vote. All right, there's my way, uh, we can put it to a vote, all those in favor of changing the shoreline district. Or leaving the shoreline district as it currently is. Signify by saying no.
Aye.
Aye. Oliver?
I'm listening.
Okay, just making sure you were there, so how does the tie work?
Tie fails.
Tie fails.
You have to vote for the opposite side, you haven't done that yet.
You gotta ask for the yes or no.
Opposed.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Nay, so there's the tie. And then what do we do, because I haven't been in this position before.
My motion fails.
My motion fails.
Okay, we can put it up, typical Robert's rules.
I'm having you.
Have a great evening, thank you for having me.
You did a tie vote on a motion, I guess the majority for past year means the motion is defeated, the tie, not a majority enough does not meet the requirement for that.
So it's gonna stay the way we have it now. It has the new drawing with the two hundred and fifty feet or the edge of the road. Okay. What else? Public comment, I'm gonna say, Joel, you got that taken care of tonight.
I think we got enough dialogue regarding the different areas and then probably, wow, how do you plan, is it just gonna be electronically for?
Corey, when will we have the final draft?
I am gonna do my best, I'll get on that for a map, um, I'll plug that in, I should be able to make my changes, I'll have two by two same way.
Okay, so I can get it to everybody Tuesday, so, and I can print it out.
Yeah, because we have, that happens as your public here, and then I'll give you, I'll give you a warning, okay, the public change, I don't care about a lot, zoning, your level is not playing.
Right.
But we're still gonna do one.
Yep.
Just so people.
Have that up to.
One more opportunity to come in.
And I.
So how does that work if you have a public hearing and people from the select board or other people come and they want changes?
They can request the changes just like tonight.
No different than the conversation you had yesterday.
So you guys vote on it. Then what we do is take pretty prescriptive notes, because we want to keep on this, and then you do is you make a motion. You make a motion to send this to the select board with A, B, C and D changes, if there are any.
Okay.
Make those changes, I make them quickly and still send it to the select board the next day, which all of our paperwork has to come in. To go, and then then we send it to the towns and we send it to the.
Okay.
The hour, and so the, the.
So like, will you have, will you have time?
We planned it to go, and what we want.
Slap for possibly twenty. We looked at the select board meeting at that one, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, the twentieth, the seventh, the twentieth. Things, because it all it says, I think it's.
Thirteen days, or no. Yeah, thirteen days.
Yeah, I think the rule is.
Isn't it gonna need to.
I don't think, I think it's within the time, I'll uh. Pass it.
Did that door open?
What door?
I feel from there, or did those just kick on?
That, things on, that one's on.
Okay, I can feel cold air on my legs, so. Um, okay.
So, public hearings, so the select board has to have a public hearing. Uh, yeah, after that public hearing, no, that, yeah, that'll be the twentieth, they'll have there, they vote on it. During required bylaws adopt to take effect twenty one days after the adoption, unless you go to a public vote. Let's say body can make minor changes, propose a bylaw amendment or appeal up to fourteen days before the final public hearing.
Yeah, we'll have fourteen days from seven, the seventh, so.
Oh, no, because they gotta have two meetings, I was gonna say, if they get their first one, they have their second, so we just have to plan that second one.
Okay. Okay. How many days now?
Four, more than fourteen days.
Look, are we ready for the May seventh meeting?
Are we ready for the May seventh meeting?
I I would say, once Corey makes these changes, May seventh, we can still tweak anything that Corey comes back with.
You guys have not voted on anything for May seventh, May seventh is when you guys are gonna vote, seven, three, seven.
Corey, you just told us by the twenty second, and then I'll give you seven.
So there could, there is the possibility, Jim, let's just say, there is the possibility we come to the May seventh meeting.
Heather shows up.
Or, I mean, and and a uh a bunch of stuff comes up and we say. Timeout, we're not gonna make a vote to send it to the select board, let's push one more meeting and push it out one more month based upon. There's fifteen people in the audience or whatever it might be, um, that that we're not set in stone at. The we're planning on sending it to you for the twentieth, but there's nothing that says we can't.
Nothing's wrong with their.
No, except.
It was not a.
Day grace, so you don't have to, the days, you're, while I lost it, for the person of the days, that's all that's.
More. Correct.
Maybe the rule of one second now, for the.
Well, seven.
The hearing for May seventh.
It's.
Yeah, that's how you get a lot of.
Well, if you just answer your handle, yeah, it should be one methodology for everything.
Okay, uh, we got the meeting set, any other necessary? I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, uh, make the motion to a juror.
I'll second them.
Then they seconded the discussion, we're done, all those signify by saying aye, aye, opposed.
Aye.
Aye, Oliver.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Oliver, see you on the seventh. Okay, it does.